This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you everyone for being here. This is a work session for the Board of Commissioners, June 2nd, 2020. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. Okay, thank you. So why don't we go around and this part of roll call and check in. Let's go to each Commissioner. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're working on broadband. We're chewing away as if it were an elephant to bite at the time. And there's clearly a need. We're looking at education first in the heart of Platteville County, the Elsie Jewel Vine Maple area. And we'll just keep you updated as we have something more quantifiable or action oriented to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, I'm wondering, Commissioner Thompson, who is "we"?
Madam Chair, is there time to go through, iterate the list?
No, there is not. But I do, I take Commissioner Webb's point that broadband is something that we all care about and perhaps we can get a work session on that in the near future.
Oh, that'd be swell. I'd love that.
Commissioner Webb, would you like to continue?
Yes, I just have a question. Are we going to get anything, a piece of paper or anything prior to our strategic planning session next week?
I don't know. Do we have an answer for that one? Monica?
I believe so. We are meeting with the strategic plan team this afternoon and so.
Yeah, there will be materials that go out either this afternoon or tomorrow likely, so.
Oh, great. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Nebiker? I heard you before, Commissioner Nebiker. Are you having trouble on mute?
Yeah, I was having some trouble. Yeah, so I just have a question. I noticed in the bulletin that there's information about people completing the census, but there's no site or number for people to call on. And I just wondered if that could be included when that goes out, that information? I think that might be helpful.
I can go ahead and make sure that the census website is included.
Thank you.
Very good. And is Commissioner Quayle on the line now?
There he is.
I am.
Would you like to go? We're just kind of checking in right now. It's your turn.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, great. Well, thanks. I'm glad you made it in very short time. So I don't have anything to report either. Discussing the formal agenda, what we're planning on doing today is if we have, if time allows, is we are going to have the pay equity information. Ms. Stiles will be giving us that, I believe. And then we will have the government conduct thing. And then we'll have the, and sorry, I don't have it in front of me. That's the problem. I didn't get the agenda this time. Other than what this, it's the improper governmental conduct policy and hotline. And then we'll also have a report from, a COVID report. And we'll see what else we can do today. But let's go ahead and start right in with the pay equity study. Ms. Stiles, would you like to start us with that?
Sure. Good afternoon. I know it's been a while since we've had conversations about the pay equity study, but good news, it's done. So much thanks to my partner Joanna, who took a look at what we had and when she came on board and made it much more digestible for everybody. So I can't appreciate her input and insights enough. So we're actually going to take turns.
Ms. Stiles?
Yeah.
Before we get started, there seems to be a lot of feedback on the line. Let's please have everybody mute their phone, their computer unless they're talking. And because I want to be sure that we are able to hear this. Okay, thank you.
Are you able to hear me okay?
It's still, it's still a lot of static in the line. I can hear you, but there's static. Here's another try, Kelly.
Okay, if I need to, I can call back. Try to call back from my phone.
Maybe I'll get started.
What do you think?
Yeah. I just found a way to help you, Kelly.
They didn't?
Okay, someone's on their way to help you, Kelly.
Okay, so maybe I'll get started. Oregon pay equity law. In 2018, Oregon passed a law that on January 1st, 2019, Oregon employers are prohibited from discriminating on pay, and that's the total amount of pay, based on protected class for comparable work. And if we unpack that a little bit, it's kind of a big statement, right? Because protected class, as we all know, there's a lot of things we generally don't talk about in the employment section. I mean, we may talk about veteran status and some of the other things, but we certainly don't talk about sexual orientation, race, color, disability, those types of things. So as employers, we had a big challenge and how do we implement this pay equity law? The other thing I want to tell you is that there's exceptions. So you can treat people differently for comparable work based on a few different things. One is seniority. The second would be a merit-based system, education, training, experience, or combination of those factors. And so the challenge for us is really to figure out how do you analyze pay equity? And so one of the things that, why do a pay equity study, right? Why go through all this trouble to do a study? Well, if you do a study and if it's done within three years of a complaint and the employer has made reasonable and substantial progress, there are some damages that are disallowed. So the compensatory and the punitive damages are disallowed, but you're still responsible for up to two years' back pay costs and attorney's fees. So obviously, we want to spend some time doing it, but we don't want to spend a ton of time doing it, if it makes any sense. How are you doing, Kelly?
Okay, can you, can everybody hear me now? This is better?
Yes. Okay, there you go, Kelly.
Okay, can you hear me? Hold on.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can? Okay. There's a, there's a big delay, so that's why I wanted to ask. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and keep talking. And if you can't hear me, then just let me know. So what we did here is we took a two-part approach to this study. And as you can see from the slide, we looked at it from a statistical standpoint, which Joanna will speak a bit more about. And then from analytical components, which I'll speak a bit more about. So what we looked at is our current pay structures. We have free wage skills. And that was what we looked at from a statistical analysis point. And then we looked at our current positions and how many employees are in each position. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that was also used in the statistical analysis component that Joanna will speak about next. I think.
Sorry, bear with us. It's hard to kind of shifting off and on.
Yeah.
So sorry about that. Okay. Pay equity study. So basically, this is a math problem. And so what we did is use a regression analysis. And a great regression analysis is the mathematical analysis of the different samples. So the different pay points. So employees have, each of them have a different pay point within a range. And we know that the courts have held this as the gold standard for a regression analysis. And so you may remember from school, the bell curve. And that's basically what that represents right there. So basically, if you look at two standard deviations below the mean and above the mean, you should get most everybody to be within a good standard and to look at it. So we basically use this mathematical analysis. Ideal sample size is 20 to 30 people. In some of our pay ranges, we did have that many people, but there were a number that didn't. So we did the best we could and we looked at our regression analysis. We use those classifications and pay ranges. But just to add here, this is why, because we don't have a great sample size for many of them. That's why we went through the second round of the study just to ensure that people who had the same job class, job description, there was a rational basis for how they were paid.
Okay, so for the not math, which is my stronger suit, the not math part, we talked about looking at the same job analysis. So what we did was looked at our current job titles as well as classifications. And we looked at the employees that were in those job class classifications. And the next slide has an example for you that can better give you an idea of what we're trying to accomplish here. So it utilizes the key data of seniority, education, training, and experience, which is also identified in our personnel policies as tools that we can use for recruiting and depending on where we place new hires on pay scales and also when we're looking at promoting current employees. So what this additionally does in regards to the study is that it creates a rational basis for discrepancies in pay, which again, the next slide will kind of bring that a little bit clearer. And then the key components we really wanted to look at are years of service with the county and then years within a specific position. So the best example, and this is kind of an excerpt from Joanna's main spreadsheet, is the Senior Deputy Sheriff 1. So as you can see, we took out the names, but you can see the annual salary. And then you look at, the first set of dates is years with the county. And the second set of dates is years in position. So these deputies more than likely were hired as a sheriff's deputy. And based on experience, skills, training, they were eligible for a promotion to the senior deputy position. So that second date is when they were promoted into the Senior Deputy 1 position. And then there's a notes section, you'll see by the 1, K-9 special duty pay, that will also add additional pay to their, to their annual rate of pay. And this is kind of what we needed to use because if we picked one or the other, it was thrown off some of our analysis. So we used a hybrid approach to explain those discrepancies, if there were any, and how we, how we came to the conclusion that we are paying our employees equitably within the classifications.
So good news is that the county is in excellent shape as far as internal pay equity is concerned. We only found one discrepancy in the regression analysis, and that was a management employee. And that will be addressed. But in the same pay analysis, there were no discrepancies. I think this is a huge win. This means that when people are hired or promoted, they're placed appropriately within the scale and for a rational basis. So I think this is excellent results and I'm very pleased. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Nebiker, I see your hand up. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, it takes a little while for some reason today to unmute. Are the salaries for pay equity based on the total package? Or is it just the amount of salary that they're paid each month?
You know, honestly, a lot of it is very comparable. So we looked at total salary, but the law requires total compensation. And so we reviewed even casual employees. We reviewed how we pay them and are they comparable within their range? And we found that they were. So the answer to your question is yes, it's total compensation.
Thank you.
Do I see any other hands up right now? I only see Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Nebiker on my screen. Commissioner Webb has a question? Commissioner Webb, please. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. No, I guess, where are we in your presentation? I have a couple of general questions to ask and I couldn't tell.
We are at the end.
Okay, okay, okay. So then I have a couple of things. Is, has the county, or is it allowable anymore to give veteran preferences?
We do give veteran preferences in our hiring practices, yes.
Okay, and that's okay?
In fact, we're required to give preferences to veterans. And there's a process that we must go through, yes.
And then how about any other affirmative action kinds of things? I mean, if we, you know, set up a pair of us and we have two finalists for a position and one of them is a minority or a woman, or do we have the legal authority to give a preference based on some of these, these issues?
Man, that is a tar pit we do not want to go into.
I would agree with that exactly.
But, but I will say, we always try to find the best fit, right? And best fit can include a number of factors. We want a diverse employee base. We want people with different experiences. It doesn't necessarily have to be a gender-based thing or a, I don't know, one of the other protected classes. But generally, we at the county try to ensure that we have a diverse group of people.
And we do track that information on voluntary forms from applicants that apply for jobs, but that cannot legally be included in the hiring package or with the application and resume. It just, it just simply cannot. But we do track that information from an internal HR standpoint per the affirmative action plan.
Oh. Oh, I'm confused. I mean, do we have an affirmative action program?
Well, all employers are required to have an affirmative action plan, which is basically saying we do not discriminate our hiring practices based on any of the protected classes.
But affirmative action is almost the opposite of that. It gives favorability to certain classes.
Yes, and like Joanna said, that's, that's a tricky dance that we have to do. And like I said, we do track that information, but it simply just cannot be provided when we're looking at making final hiring decisions. It has to be based on experience and education. And we, other than veterans preference, we do not score any of the other types of protected classes.
Okay, okay. I think that's all. Thank you.
I was wondering, is there a, this is Commissioner Sullivan. Is there a, when you're looking at pay, does that get compared to other, similar pays, similar positions in other counties? And so we certainly don't want people to be underpaid, but we also don't want people to be overpaid. How do they figure what, what the pay would be justified? How is the pay justified?
Well, the pay equity is an internal study to ensure that our practices internally, our employees are being paid equitably. We're not using outside or comparable counties as a comparison regarding the pay equity study. What you're, what you're saying, Commissioner Sullivan, is it's, that's more of a comping class.
So that's a different question.
What I was going to say, Chair Sullivan, this is Don, but I was just going to say that there is a process where we have comparable counties that we reach out to and we look at their relative compensation. And we will make adjustments to ours based upon the median of those comparators, just so we are in the market. So ultimately, that is what informs the actual pay, pay plans.
Thank you. Is, and what, and what place does, and this may not be what the study is, but what, what place is there for evaluations of work? Is that, that's something aside from what we're talking about today?
Yes, that's a separate annual process and it's an ongoing process with our staff, but that's not directly tied to the pay equity study. But that does.
The pay equity study is to show that, and it sounds like that we did a good.
Yeah, the pay equity study is.
That we're being fair with how we pay our people.
Yeah, it's, it's that, that we're following the, the legal factors for how we establish individual pay and that there's reason behind that. And there is a process and that, and that we aren't favoring anybody over others, that if you have the same experience, education, background, that you're going to be treated similarly. And so what this analysis shows is that the county has done a good job of treating folks that are doing similar work similarly when it comes to pay.
Well, I think that's wonderful. And do we, do we need, what do we need, what is the next step after we get done discussing this? Is there a next step?
No, there's not a next step per se, except for we're going to continue to do what we do. We'll continually make sure that our compensation and our, and our classification systems are routinely evaluated and updated. And we'll continually manage our compensation process to the pay equity law. But this basically doesn't require any additional board action. It's just really information purposes and to assure your board that we are following the law.
Well, thank you very much. And I wanted to say my appreciation to Ms. Stiles. I know you've been working on this for a while and I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. Thank you. And Joanna, I'm glad that you came on board to help us also on the rest of the staff. So does anybody have any other comments they'd like to make on this particular issue? Otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, so let's move on to the next one. And I believe, Don, you're up for that, improper government behavior.
So Chair Sullivan, members of the board, one of my just fundamental beliefs is that local governments is kind of a bastion for really making democracy work. And you know, part of that is, well, part of that is really two, two different elements that I talk about. One is that, you know, county's role is to interpret public interest. And our, our second role is to maintain public trust. And we maintain public trust by how we perform the services that, that the community needs and wants. And so part of that is to make sure that we are behaving within ethical standards, that we're not allowing favoritism, that there's not graft and just misuse of, of the public's resources. And so, you know, part of creating this public trust is to create an ethical culture within Platteville County. And, and I think we do have that, but I think it's something that you have to continually tend to, to make sure that over time, that all of our employees appreciate and understand their responsibilities and also provide a vehicle for the public and for employees to, to raise issues and to share concerns about what they're seeing within the organization. So that if we do have a situation that we need to know about and that we would like to address, that there's a vehicle for someone to actually safely share the information that they have. And so this is something that I worked on in my previous, with my previous employer. And I think it's important for really any local government. And so we have drafted a reporting of improper governmental conduct policy that really fits Platteville County. It provides a framework on how the county would actually process complaints. It gives employees, contractors, and the public a sense of where they can go. And it introduces something new here, which is a hotline that would provide 24-hour access to, to the complaint window and would allow complainants to remain anonymous if they would like to, but still allow us to communicate with the anonymous complainant. So, so again, this is, for, for me, this is just creating the culture that we really want for the county. And there'll be a training element with our staff, you know, training, ongoing training for the board. And you know, part of that is, you know, conflict of interest training. And so, you know, this is just the beginning. We've been working with a software provider called, called Ethics Point. And, and they would be the vehicle for a lot of these complaints. And when we get the, these complaints, we would investigate. And if they were found to be substantiated, then we would share those findings with the board just to be as, as transparent as we can. So, you know, our, our recommendation would be that the board, at a future board meeting, adopt the reporting of improper governmental conduct policy. And then also have staff work on, on implementing the software solution. So, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, isn't this just a dandy idea? There are a couple of truisms that come to mind. And one is everything takes maintenance. And so to maintain ethical integrity is a wonderful thing, I think. And, and number two, what gets measured gets done. So I wonder if, if the board will receive measures of, related to these. And then the third question is, is the public invited into this as well?
Yeah, so, so let me answer that. Is that we will provide metrics on the number of cases that are coming into the hotline and then also metrics on whether those were sustained or not sustained, just so you have kind of a record of that. And we can give categories of the types of complaints that are coming through the hotline. And so, so yes, on that front. And then the second question, Commissioner, if you could.
Well, it's, it's wonderful that we're maintaining ethical integrity and examining ourselves about that, holding ourselves accountable to that. It's wonderful that the board will be receiving metrics about that. I wonder if the public is invited into this conversation as well. It's a more complicated, it's more time-consuming and I think ultimately more satisfying.
So let me see if I can answer that. So the public will be able to interface with the hotline and with us on any complaints that they might have or any concerns. I think that the public will also see us talking about what our, what our ethical responsibilities are just so they understand a little bit more about how the public does its work. Because the public does its work in a very different way than the private sector does. And so, so I think the more we are visibly talking about ethics and we're talking about what the underpinnings of local government are, I think the public will just learn kind of that civics lesson about why we do the things we do.
Awesome. This is like the Fourth of July. We should have fireworks for this one. Thank you.
No fireworks this year, Commissioner, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I see Commissioner Nebiker's hand up and I'm sorry, I apologize to the other commissioners. I don't have your, your image up in front of me. Commissioner Nebiker?
Thank you. I was glad to see that this also includes authorized volunteer positions. authorized volunteer positions. And, uh, it talks about officials. I'm assuming that means elected.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Quayle, Commissioner Webb, do you have any comments?
I do.
I don't-
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, just, ma'am, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Webb.
Um, in the, um, I, I, this is, this is very thick stuff. I mean, I really, wow, it, it's, it's very complex. But in general, I think, I think quite understandable. I just have a couple of specific questions. One of them is on page five. It's, um, section under investigation. It's 2.1.4. And I'm, um, my question is about what is the referral agency?
So oftentimes, if there is an allegation that would otherwise violate Oregon state ethics laws, sometimes those complaints will be referred directly to the State Ethics Commission. And they will conduct an investigation. And so we would, so at that point, we could choose to suspend the county's in, investigation until the state finishes theirs.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and, and I have, and just on the very next paragraph, 2.1.5 on page six. Um, in all of my years in government, um, I've never seen, I guess I'm, I'm used to things like this going sort of up the chain of command or the governmental hierarchy. But is it now common practice to ask another county's, let's say, administrative office to, um, to, to do an investigation in our county?
Well, Commissioner, if I could say that it, it is not common. But it does happen. And where you see it a lot is within law enforcement, where you'll have a, a, a neighboring sheriff's office come in and, and do an investigation. And so, and it does happen at times within, um, other, uh, layers, uh, of government, but it would be rare. Um, the situation where we would call to an outside agency to come in and investigate on our behalf on a non-criminal case, that would be extremely rare.
Okay, okay. My other question is about the hotline. Can you explain a little bit about who, who this entity is? You called it Ethics Point, I think. Are they a consultant who also provides us software?
So, yeah, Ethics Point is a, it, it's a compliance software company. And so they have software that a lot of organizations use for really the same purpose we are. And that's both the private sector and the public sector. So what they basically do is that if you're Intel, if you're any private business who is concerned about compliance with any level, um, of maybe human resource policy, but it could be technology policies, it could be purchasing and procurement policies. You can, you can establish a customized list that their employees can then interface to, and they can identify those specific areas. And then they can file complaints, they can share information, um, and they can do it anonymously. And so, so, so that's really what this is. It, it is a portal for really us to have a customized Platte County presence. Um, and there's 24-hour call, call answering folks. And, and there's also just the ability to submit an electronic form, basically. Um, and so that's what Ethics Point does. And they do it both for the private and the public sector.
Okay, okay. Um, oh, yeah, on page 10. Um, I guess that's item seven. And I'm not sure I understand completely on what the exception item is about. Exceptions to what, I, I guess is my question.
So there are times within these policies that we would want to treat a specific complaint because of its unique nature just differently than what is prescribed in the policy. So there are times when, when, when we would need flexibility. And again, you can't even, I can't imagine what some of these complaints are because you don't know until you actually get them. But there may be one that is just either extraordinary in some case, or it's just unique in some case. And so this, this part of the policy just basically says, if that happens, then, you know, you can make an exception, but it would require it to be granted by the Board of Commissioners. So.
Okay, okay. Unless we delegated that responsibility to you.
It was delegated.
Okay, I, I think, um, believe it or not, I think that's all my questions.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, Commissioner Quayle, did you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, County Manager, do, does this, I just wanted to be clear that this, uh, this would be a county-wide policy and it applies not only just to the staff, it also applies to the Board of Commissioners. It also applies to the DA's office and the sheriff's office. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, yes, it would be all encompassing. And, you know, we, as we get complaints and as long as, um, as the folks are, are, are not culpable, we would be sharing that with the department directors and the elected officials. But yes, it, it applies to all county employees and officials.
I, I, I'm thrilled to see this and I, um, and thank you very much for doing the work on this. I, I think it's terrific. Um, in fact, I was going to ask if we can share with other, other, um, people that might be interested.
If I could just add, Don, it also applies to contractors.
Yeah.
And, um, Sheriff Phillips, I'm going to give you a warning because I'm always calling on you when you, when you're not on the agenda, but you are, um, I see you on my screen and you are an elected official. And I just wondered if you wanted to make any comments on this?
Uh, nothing specifically this time. Uh, we're familiar with these kinds of investigations internally at the sheriff's office and we've been doing them for a long time. And there will be interplay between existing sheriff's office policies and this one.
Okay, thank you very much.
And what I would say is that that's very, um, typical. We did the same, um, over in Washington County and, and we will work with, with the sheriff with that.
So I, myself, I'm in favor of moving this to the agenda and getting it started as soon as possible. Do we have a consensus on that from, um, the other commissioners? Does anybody object to getting this on an agenda to get it adopted?
No, no. Can I ask one other question?
Sure, sure. But just before you ask that, Pam, I mean, Commissioner Webb, I, I don't hear any objections to getting that moved onto the agenda.
Okay, we-
Okay, County Manager Moore, Boone, if you could, we could move that to an agenda when it's appropriate. That'd be great. And, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Webb, you had a question?
Yes, I, I have a, I have a question about the role of enforcement here. If, if in an investigation there is some kind of evidence of something that is actually unlawful that has happened, uh, who, who do we refer that to? Is that what we use the sheriff's office for?
We would start with, with the sheriff's office.
Okay.
But I will let the sheriff respond too, if you'd like, so.
Well, I, I think part of it depends on where the crime occurs and what kind of crime it is. For example, if it's a very complicated, uh, financial issue and it occurs within Astoria, maybe it would be a teamwork approach between Astoria Police Department and one of our detectives. It just, until we see what the situation is and what the available resources are, it's kind of hard to guess.
Okay.
And what I would say is that we would always start with the sheriff only because he could help us get it to the right place, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think having something like this is, is another example of what we can be proud of in our county. And, uh, so I, I think, good, good job. So, um, so we'll be moving that to an agenda so that we can adopt it. And we are now going to go, I believe, County Manager, to the COVID report. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner. Um, so just have four quick items regarding COVID. And when I say quick, that could be a relative term, but, um, the first is that, um, we did send out, um, a draft letter to the governor regarding our Phase Two request. Um, I've heard back from some of the board members that they're fine with it. But I'm just letting you know that our intention is to send that out this afternoon. Um, it needs to be in by the end of the day tomorrow to be considered this week. So, um, we're going to try to get it in a little bit earlier, just so they have time to actually process it. So if there's no objections, we will, um, proceed with that.
If, if we may take that at this moment, is there any, any, um, questions? Commissioner Quayle?
No, I think it looked great.
So I, I do want to say that just as a little background, um, the governor did introduce, um, a few more prerequisites for Phase Two, and I discussed that, um, last week. And there was an article in the Oregonian that identified a number of, of, of counties that at the time may not have been eligible for Phase Two, given some of those metrics. But we actually believe that beginning this week, we will probably, um, be el- eligible and, um, you know, they, they made the exception last time because we were having an outbreak, um, in the food processing businesses. And so, you know, we are, you know, feeling positive about our requests, but, you know, we'll have to, to, to wait and see is the bottom line. So there's no questions about that. Um, we also sent out a draft letter that, um, that Mike McNichol and I worked on, which is to, um, OHA, just communicating some of our ongoing concerns about the food processing businesses. And as you've likely read, the food processing industry generally speaking, in this region has had a lot more outbreaks. Um, and some of them really fairly large. And so it, it has got, gotten the, the governor's attention. But, uh, we'd like to send that letter. We are basically asking them to collaborate with the counties that have food processing businesses. And, you know, we are recommending three things that they consider, um, which would help us. One is having more OSHA inspections. The other is to, is to require the businesses to do testing. And then the third would be to allow employees that have been exposed to be able to, to take the 14-day quarantine period and during that period be eligible for unemployment. So some of those may be more doable than, than others, but we think that they're worth raising. You know, for, for us, it is just an equity issue and that's something that OHA is very concerned about. So we would just like to have more collaboration with them. So.
Thank you. Do, do we have any commissioners that would like to make a comment on that letter? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very much in favor of this. I appreciate the, um, equity lens being applied to this. I wonder if you, uh, have any ability to forecast how OHA will respond to our request?
I don't. I don't know if, if Mike does, but I mean, I think that given the recent outbreaks, it's something that's certainly thinking about. But I don't know. Mike, if you have any sense?
Is Mike on the line?
I see him on the line, but I don't know if he's listening right now. Oh, there he is.
Dr. McNichol?
I've, I've unmuted his microphone.
Well, we can follow up on that question.
Any, anyone else have any comments about that letter?
This is Commissioner Quayle. I think it's very well written. I'm glad we're sending it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I, I would, I would agree. Thank you very much for doing such a good job on this letter. So hearing no, um, objections, uh, we will get that submitted as soon as is, is feasible. So, go ahead.
Go to the third topic really quick, and that's beach access, again, and I apologize for talking about this so often. I have never talked about beach access this much in my life. Um, but, so assuming that we are approved for Phase Two and given what your board approved last week, where this weekend will be the weekend that short-term rentals, camping and, and lodging, um, will be at 60%. Um, you know, we have always, um, considered part of Phase Two, opening up the beach access points because travel is now unrestricted and we are, we are having people in our communities. And closing those, those beach access points, as we have learned, puts a lot of, um, vehicles on, on the road, parking along the beach access roads, um, which creates its own headaches. And we would much prefer them to go on the beach and then spread out instead of parking, um, right next to each other. And so, um, so our goal is to open up beach access and to, and to keep them open until there's some reason not to. And so, but I do want to get the board's feedback, uh, about that. We have had some preliminary discussions with Gearheart, um, about that with, uh, with Chad. And so, and they're going to do ostensibly what the county does, but it just seems to me that continually closing those access points on the weekend is just going to push people further south down into the open beach areas. And I'd rather help, help manage the entire, the, the entire beach access from, from a county perspective, which would, which would be to open those up and, and keep them open.
May I ask, um, Sheriff Phillips, um, how, what, what the experience was this last weekend and, and what, what, how do you feel about this?
I, I think it's, uh, in our best interest to open the beach accesses. What we've experienced in the past, when the beaches were open, but people were on the beaches, uh, we, we had a perception problem, the perception being that people shouldn't be, uh, anywhere but home. Uh, when we close the beach accesses, we have, um, so many people parking along the approaches that they're in people's yards and there's trespassing issues and, and congregation issues. And so really it, it's easier on our neighborhoods, uh, and my staff to, to let the people get onto the beach and disperse than to have them kegged up at our access points.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any input from the commissioners at this point?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Okay.
So I, I agree with the county manager and the sheriff. And we just have to hope that people will be responsible. I don't know that that's going to happen, but either way, it seems like it's a problem. So we might as well treat the whole county the same. And I think that's probably a good plan. I think this has all been an experiment from the beginning. Whether it's beach closures or it's stay at home, any of that, it's, we, we don't really know exactly the perfect- It's, we don't really know exactly the perfect thing for everyone to do, so we're just trying our best. And I have a question. So, at what point can the short-term rentals open fully?
Well, to open fully would be 21 days after the beginning of the first step, so right now, that would be June 26th.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Sheriff Phillips, your box looks like you may want to have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other commissioner would like to make a comment about this?
This is Commissioner Quayle, I think it's time to have the beach accesses open.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone object? So, what do we do now? We just leave the gates open, or is there, what happens next?
So, yeah, so, we had only agreed to keep the gates closed through, really, June, through really last weekend. And so, going forward, we would just work with the sheriff, just to keep the gates open. And then, because we have gates installed, if we ever needed to, we could still close them, but that would be based on, you know, public safety or some other, you know, type of event that really, we can't even fathom right now, so.
I have a question. I agree with all of this too, but I was thinking about the solar eclipse, and they did a lot of messaging, trying to avoid what they were worried about of fires and whatnot. And we are beginning the fire season now, and we, there's a lot of concern about that. But I guess my question is concerning the Fourth of July fireworks. I agree with needing to cancel that event, but I know, like, Seaside always has a lot of problems each year. Are we going to try to, excuse me, do any messaging ahead of time for the tourists that will now, will then be in the area to say, hey, respect what we're trying to do? Is that just going to be an ongoing thing?
I would. I think that's just going to be an ongoing, and as we get closer to the Fourth of July, we will work with all of our partner cities and figure out what kinds of messaging we want to really focus on. And that will just be an ongoing element as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. I see Commissioner Thompson's hand up.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, and the concern that I've already raised to the sheriff last year is not just visitors and tourists, but it's also second homeowners who want to come to the beach and do what they want to do, which can sometimes include exploding illegal fireworks for day after day after day, or night after night after night. So, I'd hope that our messaging includes that we don't want this to happen, and that I also hope that this reporting of issues related to people behaving badly can be part of this program that you just mentioned about how do we monitor misbehavior all around.
So, if I can say, I think that, you know, we have, we can certainly send out correspondence to our licensed short-term rental folks and just reiterate certain facets as we move forward. So, that might be one of the ways that we can get it to the actual folks that are leasing these properties, is to have them, have us work with the homeowners.
Thank you, I'm grateful for that. People don't see it as behaving badly, they see it as something else that, because they want to, because it's fun for them. And so, I'm grateful for whatever reassertion of community standards for neighborhood availability that we can describe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments before we end this session?
If I, I just have one more item.
Go ahead.
So, the only other thing is just something to think about, so this is just planting a seed, but we're going to be starting to talk with the department directors tomorrow about, you know, how we should approach reopening the county, and on what kind of a trajectory we would like to. And so, one of the facets there will be your board's desire regarding board meetings, and any direction you want to give us regarding just public meetings, generally speaking. And I'm not asking for anything right now, I'm just more asking you just to think about it. You know, I think that these electronic meetings have been working fine, I think the virus is still in our communities, so being cautious is not a bad thing. But I just want to just open it up, and at some point, we will schedule a work session topic to get your feedback. So, this is more just think about it, and we will circle back.
Thank you. I've got another, I have one more question about the signage for Westport. Is that, is that something that we can address in this, or is that something that needs to come up next week, or is that timely? Help us with that one.
Well, I think that, you know, the signage is not just a county thing, and so, it's a county ODOT, you know, Waukeah County is obviously has a vested interest, because they actually operate the ferry. So, what I would say is that staff will, we will talk about what the best approach is, but what it's going to take is just all of us reaching out at the staff level, probably, and to come up with a plan, and then come back to your board and just give you an update on what that might look like. I know that Waukeah County Board asked for a board meeting, but I think staff would have to do some of that work first, just to see what the lay of the land is.
Okay, thank you. And I hope to get on the agenda in the future, work session in the future, an update on how Westport was doing. I know there's several things going on out there, and I think it's almost been a year since we've had an update, so I would like to have another one.
We will do that, Commissioner.
All right. Any other comments? A lot of good work done today. Thank you so much for everyone being here, and appreciate all the work that the staff is doing. And I just want to give a shout-out to Teresa. Congratulations on your promotion, and congratulations on your cellphone. I'll be texting you soon. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.